A little bit to your mouth. There you go.
Oops, I forgot to do that.
Good evening on the consent-
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can, yeah. Go ahead, Kathy.
Awesome.
So on the consent agenda tonight, we have the annual WCS contract. This year, the CPI adjustment was 2.9%, was a little over $1,000. This is for their general portion. The total amount of that, of the general, will be $36,963. And we also have the $16,000, that's specifically for utility bills. And we do have Ms. Woodruff, the WCS Vice Chair, will be talking to you during the actual meeting. She'll be giving you information on the total amount of money that's been spent through June 1st, and how it's been split out between different categories, and about how the COVID-19 has changed their operations. And that's the information I have for you. Have any questions?
Okay, so this is our regularly scheduled, previously committed support to community sharing with a cost of living increase. This does not take into account any special funding that we have chosen to do more recently and that we might choose to do in the future year. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Good on that. All right, thanks very much. Next item up is our five-year tourism action plan, five-in-one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Zoe Monahan. I am the Assistant to the City Manager. And this evening, I'm here to share the Tourism Promotion Committee's recommendation for a five-year action plan for the Wilsonville Tourism Development Strategy. Thank you. Which is also on the consent agenda this evening. The City Council adopted the Wilsonville Tourism Development Strategy in 2014 and established a Tourism Promotion Committee in 2015. The following year, the first five-year action plan and annual one-year implementation plan for the Wilsonville Tourism Development Strategy, a business plan for the program, was developed. The plan has been developed each subsequent year. This year will be a little different due to COVID-19. The Tourism Promotion Committee meets a minimum of four times per year. This is a list of the 2019, '20 fiscal year committee members. Rohit Sharma is our newest member, while Jeff Brown is completing his final term. There will be two vacant seats in the upcoming fiscal year, and staff will continue efforts to recruit committee members as soon as it's appropriate. This is a list of our ex officio advisory members. This list will remain the same in the upcoming year. You'll notice that Charlotte Leehan, Councilor Charlotte Leehan, is our City Council Liaison to the committee. This year's greatest accomplishment was hiring J-Ray as our new consultant. An RFP was sent out in early fiscal year 1920 to select a consultant following the previous consultant, Vertigo Marketing's dissolving in June of 2019. Velocity Marketing, one of the former principals from Vertigo, provided marketing services during the interim until J-Ray was selected. J-Ray is based out of Tacoma, Washington, and they've provided excellent social media content, COVID response information, and they've worked on an update to our website, which you'll see in just a moment. And they also conducted a program review. The review was shared with the committee in February, and it should have also been attached in your packet. Annually, the Tourism Committee will review the Tourism Promotion Grant programs. Unfortunately, this year, the Tourism Promotion Committee was unable to meet in March to review and award the city's Community Tourism Grant and the Clathmus County and City Partnership Grant. Both of these programs were put on hold due to COVID-19. We do expect that these programs will resume in the upcoming year. Additionally, the Tourism Promotion Committee's special project was also put on hold. The Parker Mark staff had just completed the RFP process to select a consultant, excuse me, for the multi-use facility and potential hotel addition, just as COVID-19 had started to impact the city. This project is on hold, and it has not been funded in the upcoming fiscal year budget. However, the business plan does suggest funding for the project in fiscal year 2122. And hopefully, at that time, we'll have a better sense of the new market demands. J-Ray provides our marketing services, and as a result of COVID-19, staff was directed to scale back the amount of work since tourism isn't currently taking place during the stay-home, save-lives order and moving into Phase 1. The scope of the planned marketing had included social media, promotional campaigns, and a number of other projects. However, they have been scaled back. This is a look at our updated scope. This allows us to reduce the budget but not lose the momentum that our tourism marketing efforts have made. As you can see, we'll have less activity over the next six months, and then we'll plan to ramp back up in January with additional tourism efforts. And then we'll hopefully get back to a new normal, increasing the social media, planned campaigns, increased authentic images, and improved itineraries promoting everything the area has to offer, since Wilsonville is in the heart of it all. We'll especially focus on the non-summer shoulder seasons with our efforts. In the next year, the Tourism Promotion Consultants will continue to focus on increasing our social media followers and increase posts on the second half of the fiscal year. There will also be targeted campaigns and posts in the second part of the year, so people will continue to check out Wilsonville. Before COVID, we were gearing up for a spring campaign highlighting a few of our pocket trips. J-Ray had also continued to develop our marketing strategy to inform people why they should choose to stay in Wilsonville. This will be even more important moving forward since it's expected that people will travel in Oregon throughout the state before they're traveling across state lines. There will also be an effort to focus on pocket trips, develop itineraries, and better link those trips to overnight stays in Wilsonville. This is a look at our updated website. This is not currently online, but it is coming. And this allows us to highlight where we are with a lovely clickable map in the corner, and it offers a glimpse of nearby attractions. It easily encourages people to subscribe to our email list right at the top of the website. The colors and pictures are also brighter to engage our visitors. And I did mention that J-Ray's done a lot of work with our social media. These are a few recent posts that they have used. They did an excellent job pre-coronavirus as well as during the COVID-19 pandemic to provide engaging content during this time, and they have been able to grow our followers. Finally, during the second half of the fiscal year, there will be a focus on promoting Wilsonville's location in the middle of it all to residents and visitors in order to encourage exploring the area and spending a night in Wilsonville hotels. That concludes my presentation regarding Resolution 2825 to adopt the fiscal year 2020-21 five-year action plan and annual one-year implementation plan for the Wilsonville Tourism Development Strategy. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff with regard to the tourism plan here as it's been adjusted for today's realities? Counselor Linville.
Well, I think it's just a wonderful plan, and it's unfortunate that so much of it had to be adjusted so early this year. I do notice that in the document, even for recommendations for this next year, there is discussion about working with city staff about a position. And I'm wondering, unless I have just forgotten from our budget hearing and discussions, I don't recall that there was an additional position. So I was just wondering where that might come in, or if that's still just going to be on hold.
Right, so that's not something that's in the existing budget. It's something that'll be evaluated through the Cultural Arts Plan, and it's been something that has been something of interest to continue to explore over time. So no, it is not in the upcoming budget, but it will continue to be explored and evaluated in the upcoming year, at the same time and with the Arts and Culture Heritage Plan.
Other questions? Counselor Leehan, you're liaison to this group.
Yes, I just want to say that this has been a challenge, of course, working through this season. But I wanted to give some kudos to Zoe in particular, who stepped in in the last year and kind of pulled this together because it was, you know, Mark has done it on his own pretty much for a while before this, and he was just getting swamped to the point that he couldn't manage the load. And anyway, I just want to say it's made a difference having Zoe be available to assist in administering this program.
Thank you. Counselor West?
Thank you. I am kind of a fan of Twitter. And I saw that you had the Pocket Tips, Explore Wilsonville, in the presentation, so I was like, I want to see what our page looks like. So I popped over there on my Twitter, and I see that we have four followers. But the presentation of the tweets and the pictures are beautiful. They're very, very well done. And I was just kind of wanting to dive in just a little bit more understanding about how we can expand that social media reach because I think that the tweets themselves are beautiful. And how do we get more following and more kind of buzz around that social media piece so people can easily access these great little pocket trips? This, I think, is a fantastic and really innovative idea.
That's an excellent question. So we're focusing on Facebook as well as Instagram. And we were having about two, I think there were three to five posts a week that were going out previous to COVID-19. We've since scaled back. A lot of that's budgetary. So we have one, I think there's about one or two posts a week, and then we'll also reshare as needed so that it takes a little bit less staff time for our consultant. So there were a lot of efforts to drive traffic, have more engaging content about what they could go see or do over the last few months. And the intent will be, once we get into the second half of the year, to continue to increase that yet again. In the springtime, they had planned a campaign on Facebook. So it would basically have you go to our website, enter some sort of sweepstakes so that you're learning more about the pocket trips. We'll also be developing those further so that they're linked directly back to Wilsonville and hopefully providing information about how far away it is, how you can link those trips. So social media and linking to the pocket trips will be a focus in the future. We've just had to scale that back a little bit right now and hope to pick that up again when people can travel again.
Okay. Is it even helpful if, like, other influencers or people that have reach within Wilsonville on social media, like, help share this? So some of my posts in Wilsonville on Facebook get over 8,000 views a week. So if I was to turn around and post this as a counselor, would that help people in the area? Would that be helpful to you guys, or if I have other people that have good followings in Wilsonville or in the Portland area in general? Would that be helpful?
Absolutely. Anytime that you have additional followers or different influencers sharing the information, it'll get out to a larger reach.
I could add on this. There has been a large shift here in this year with the pandemic. But understand that prior to this year, no, we were not marketing to anyone within a 50-mile radius because funds can't be used except to, the only funds we get are TLT funds. And those come from people's heads in bed. And so the marketing is supposed to go on outside that 50-mile radius. It's not, which is why local festivals, you know, they don't qualify for funding, and they're not a priority because people generally are not coming to stay overnight in order to go to fun in the park. Because lots of towns have comparable things. They don't need to go on a trip to stay overnight for that. So it has changed a little bit this year because we are trying to keep these venues alive when people are not traveling. But prior to, and even now with the parameters of how the TLT taxes are restricted, it's a little bit dicey to be spending that money inside, that's supposed to be for marketing, to be spending it inside the 50-mile radius when those people are not likely to be getting a hotel room. Because what we're trying to do is get the number of hotel rooms up. Anyway, that's kind of the, the shift has gone on in the discussion because we want, and it's not just Wilsonville businesses, obviously, but things like Aurora or the Dahlia Festival or those other things. Is there something we can do in the interim to keep these local venues alive? Until, as Zoe said, until we get to the point where people are traveling again and will stay in a hotel in order to go to the Dahlia Festival. But if you're just going to drive there for the day and go home, that doesn't fulfill the mission of the TLT, of the tax. So we're kind of in an odd spot here. Well, I mean, it's kind of like taking in each other's laundry if we're just going to be, you know, marketing to each other here in town. Because what we're trying to do is get outside dollars flowing in specifically to hotels.
Do we do paid marketing to a sphere outside of 50 miles from the Wilsonville area with our social media? Do we do, like, do we do that?
Yeah, that's why we have J-Ray. That's why you often have somebody who is not from here, but they're from Olympia, or where they're from, Britain?
Tacoma.
Somewhere in Washington.
Tacoma.
Tacoma.
Yeah. Anyway, because they have contacts in a different sphere. And they frequently are working with other tourism outfits in, you know, Vancouver, B.C. or somewhere else to try to cede our operation to that distance that has to get a hotel room.
Well, challenging times right now in COVID. Nobody seems to be traveling that much. And clearly, we need to preserve our resources a little bit for when we get beyond that, which is how I understand this plan for the coming spring and a ramp back up first of the year. And looking forward to maybe an environment when we do have a little more travel involved, so. Any other questions for staff? Not seeing any. Ms. Monahan, anything else from you?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is this little package called the Equitable Housing Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors.
Yeah, we need to have you get real close to the mic when you're wearing a mask.
Yes, I've been practicing with the enunciation. Can you hear a little better now?
Yes.
Really? Okay, great. So I just want to provide a very quick update, and I've got to share this first. Getting lost. Here we go, screen.
There we go.
So what I want to bring before you tonight is an update on the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. We made some updates based on the feedback we got after our last round of work sessions with you all, as well as with the Task Force and the Planning Commission. So this resulted in a new action on that second list centered around home repair programs, as well as some additional considerations to really beef up some information for the other actions. We've also added in some other context to reflect conversations we had with the Planning Commission, including some spotlight information, as well as a roadmap for the construction excise tax that we talked, text that we talked with you about last time, as well as just recognizing that COVID has changed things a little bit with housing, and we want to make sure that this plan recognizes that and is able to respond in that new context. So notably, at the Planning Commission, there was a unanimous recommendation of adoption of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan as presented. There was some public input that we received about further clarifying equity. And so the Planning Commission had a pretty extensive discussion as to whether or not to modify any of the language. And ultimately, where they landed was more of a discussion on the formation of a separate Equity and Inclusion Committee that would be tasked to not only look at the implementation of this plan's actions, but as well to look at other outreach opportunities to underserved communities and to really help have more of a dialogue about equity and inclusion in the city's various planning efforts, as well as other programs that go beyond planning and housing. And so I just want to allow an opportunity for you all to ask any questions you might have about the recommendation and the plan updates. And I just want to note for you all as well that these are really two separate recommendations. So at the public hearing tonight, you will be asked to make a recommendation on adoption of the plan itself. But certainly, staff welcomes any feedback or direction you might have in terms of the other piece of Planning Commission's recommendation. And that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rybold. Counsel, questions about the Strategic Housing Plan? I wanted to pass along, I guess, that several discussions I've been engaged in have seemed to point toward us needing to have a committee work to implement whatever plan we end up with adopting. Especially, these are so complex. It's going to take some committee to work through what the options are, which priorities come first, what are the low-hanging fruit, what's the first thing to do, the second thing to do, how to do it. And I do want to remind, I guess, staff that we have such a strong and positive experience with the Special Task Force structure. And it might be appropriate that we appoint a Special Task Force to work with implementation of all these diverse possibilities under a strategic plan when we get to that point.
We can certainly do that.
Counselor Linville. Counselor Linville.
Well, this has been an incredibly comprehensive project. And I think, just like to give my congratulations to Kim and the group that have been working so diligently and all of the time that I think the Planning Commission has put into hearing concerns from the community, as well as doing the review and making recommendations. I also, and I know that we're going to be hearing more about the grant projects, but I think those are really incredible resources that are going to be brought to this project, at least to get things off the ground. And as I was looking through some of the recommendations and the requirements within some of those grant projects, I thought it was several areas in which it seemed to be focusing with the need for getting the Latinx community together to give feedback and input, as well as the recommendation for an equity and inclusion structure of some kind. And I really think that that is an appropriate strategy and that somehow there may be a larger venue more than just the equitable housing implementation in which an organization like that, that becomes, for lack of a better word, institutionalized within the city structure as a council or a commission or a board. And that to begin one of their projects might be implementation of the grant and some of the grants, and looking at middle housing and some of the other strategies that are there. So I think it's a good thing. I think it's something that we need to think about, whether they're advisory to the City Council or if they're advisory to some other organization, or if they're mobile and can go to make, you know, they're given tasks that would advise in different venues. So I just wanted to say that I'm in support of that concept.
Thank you. Other discussion or comments? Counselor Linville. I'm sorry, it's Counselor West.
That's nice. There's a lot in this plan, so big discussion here. And we may have further discussion at our meeting, you know, later tonight, too. I think probably both places, it's appropriate that we thank staff, the Task Force, Planning Commission, their careful deliberations and their work on this because I believe a tremendous amount of work has gone into this plan. I was able to listen to the Planning Commission's last month's meeting, I guess, where they discussed this plan and appreciated their careful thought and work that evening. You know, there's a lot of sections, I guess, in this plan that we could call out in our discussion that would probably be fruitful. But one line I'd like to just kind of highlight is on page, starting, I guess, starting out right at the beginning, on page one, there's some really great text in the "What is Equitable Housing?" call-out box that I appreciated and agreed with. But then even going on in page two, later on in page two, there's a line that says, "Housing equity means that people have housing choices that meet their unique needs without racial and economic disparities. It is a key component of a larger strategy of achieving greater equity." And I think in sitting with that statement, I understand the reason, I think, that Planning Commission is calling for both approval of this plan but also to have a group that would help bring this larger strategy work forward. So I also see that an equity group in some form could contribute to the work of the city in many different departments and areas and ways, but also specifically to the implementation- to the implementation of this plan. I see and understand how they are related. So there's kind of two points, you know, as when you did your presentation here, there's two points before us to plan, and then also this other recommendation that's kind of coming in concert, I guess. So I am very supportive of this plan, and also the second recommendation to look at having a group or a body to bring some of this larger equity work forward. My questions, I guess, would be, you know, informing that, what is the charge of the group? What is participants? What does recruitment for those participants look like? What resources do they have? I think that all of these things are important to the success of such a group, and they could probably be done in a number of different ways. But I want to be thoughtful in how it's done, how we support it, because I think coming up short would be very damaging. So I hope that we can continue looking at this as a council, and maybe getting some assistance from staff and seeing where other cities and areas have found success, too.
Thank you very much. Counsel West, are you hearing me? Your video is frozen. I saw a chat message you there. I can hear you now.
Yes. Sorry about the video. Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. I had a really great opportunity to chair this task force, and it was a great group of people from all walks of the community. I wish we could have had a little bit more opportunity to hear from people that weren't represented, and maybe that was people that were either had to deal with housing and also deal with the disability, or people who are people of color that are historically been marginalized from the ability to get quality housing. A lot of us already know this, but Oregon has a long history of housing discrimination. One of the most notable facts of that is Vanguard, or Vanport, sorry, Vanport over there in the North Portland area, and that issue that happened, and that equity issue, and the flooding and displacement of people of color. And so even redlining and things like that have a long history. And history still impacts us today, as we all are aware. And I, and you know, being mayor, and I had also had that conversation with the mayor about a task force or committee groups, that we can hear from people that are disabled, LGBTQ, people of color, minority groups of all walks of life, that have the ability to come and tell us their experience and what they need out of the community, and how the community is serving them to be more tailored in our approach, to make sure that we're meeting those needs. I echo everyone's thoughts around that. I really want to give a shout out to the Wilsonville Alliance for Inclusive Community that, and Garrett Pryor, I was able to do a Zoom call with him this week, and really talk about making housing focus towards making sure that people of color and equity are really a focus of ours, which I think that's all of our hearts. And I really want to appreciate their constant advocacy work to make sure that our most vulnerable are remembered as we start to expand and plan and deal with different types of housing. So I would concur with the rest of the council that some task force, or the only thing with the task force that makes me draw a pause is I think it needs to be, in my thinking, a task force is much more temporary. And I feel like an ongoing committee, even if it's quarterly, allows us to have a continuous voice about where we need to be as a city, and the different facets of the city, and how they are serving and meeting the needs of these populations, and it allows us to be much more targeted and inclusive. So I like the idea of the committee model, because I think that this potentially could be something that expands, like Counsel Lindell said, beyond just housing. And we are taking the ability to kind of make sure that we're incorporating everybody into the process of how we tackle issues as a council going forward, and how we plan in our philosophy. So that's kind of my thoughts around that, is being more specific, is more committee model, than in figuring out how to promote that, and make sure that we have people that we can represent every swath of the community as possible to be targeted in our approach. So with that, I will give it back to the council.
Thank you very much for your comments, and thank you for your work on chairing that committee, Counsel West.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? This is on tonight for hearing and potentially adoption. Not really seeing other questions. It is a big document. We have had discussion before, and I'm sure this will not be the last discussion, because figuring out what steps to go forward is going to be next. Counsel Lindell.
Well, I think there has been, both within this document, and I think some of the written comments that have come into the council, there has been, I think, a little bit of a mixed message that, I mean, I'm not quite sure about. Part of the recommendations talk about multi-generational housing, and large units, or units that are able to accommodate multi-generational housing. And yet, in the, that doesn't show up as an item in the plan. It seems like we talk more about multifamily. So am I getting that correct, Kim? Or is there a clear way that you can help me to understand that?
Sure. So multi-generational housing, you know, we tend to lump housing types into different, more discreet groups, like single-family, or duplex, or townhouse, multifamily. Multi-generational, I think, can take shape in many forms. And, you know, we heard a lot about, you know, ADUs, a lot of times are used as a means to help keep different members of the family living in the same place. That being said, a single-family home might achieve that purpose. An apartment might achieve that purpose, you know, a larger apartment, let's say, with three bedrooms or so. So I think where we did capture that idea was in the market research report that talked about future trends and future demographic changes that might occur here. In particular, it noted the Latinx community often, you know, could be a potential, as it grows, that multi-generational housing would be needed. Where that report concluded was that the need for different types of housing to serve different types of families really supported a continued mix and variety of housing types in Wilsonville to be able to accommodate multi-generational living. So there isn't necessarily a set housing type that accommodates that best, but the toolkit is to really continue to encourage a variety of housing types.
We've got 10 minutes left for one item. Sorry.
Any other discussion desired on this particular topic?
You can discuss this more at the council meeting, too, because it's on the regular agenda.
Right, it's on agenda there, and we're set up for a hearing, so there'll be time to discuss. All right, why don't we move along to our last item, then, if we can, which is our housing-related grants?
Good evening, council. Dan Polly, Planning Manager. So talking about moving forward from here, while we have been working on the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, we've worked with council, brought forward a couple resolutions in support of grants. And I'm pleased to share that we received some funding in support of projects listed to move forward this equitable housing work. And this includes working on a couple of the implementation actions, including incorporating equitable housing into the middle housing planning that's required from the state, and also defining equitable housing in new urban growth areas, particularly in Frog Pond East and South. So the three grants that I'll mention tonight, the largest, they total over $500,000. The first is for $350,000 from Metro, which supports the master plan at Frog Pond East and South, which was added to the urban growth boundary in 2019. And in this, there's a lot of work from Metro and other requirements, and also just continuing on the equitable housing work, looking at different types of housing, and how we approach equitable housing in this area. So we look forward to kicking this project off the early part of next year, and we'll be working on that through 2022. The next one I'll mention is from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. It's for $100,000, and that's to support the House Bill 2001 compliance work around middle housing, and updating our code, and seeing how the design of that middle housing will work in Wilsonville, particularly in Frog Pond. So that's exciting work. We're starting that now, and we'll be working on that through... The grant requires us to be done by next June with a lot of that work. So it all is just kind of this continuum. As we finish equitable housing up now, we're going to start in on this middle housing work, and then that will move right into the Frog Pond work. And we're getting funding in place to really support this, which is really exciting. Another part that I'll mention is another grant of just over $81,000 from Metro for specific outreach, starting with our middle housing work, but hopefully carrying on from there to work, to develop really a, build relationships and a framework for ongoing involvement of the Latinx community. As we talked about, they'll be a big part of the housing in the future. As talked about in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, so working with community partners to find new ways to engage them, and really help them be part of this community conversation around housing and other topics. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about these specific grants and the projects that they're going to support. And again, thank you for your support as we've submitted these grants, and excited that we've done better than even we thought we might on these, and we're excited to have these funds to move the projects forward.
Well, that's really great news that we have that much resource at our fingertips to move forward on all these different projects. Counsel, questions or comments for staff on the grants on housing and planning? Mr. Polly, Counsel Rybol first.
I just want to say, congratulations. I'm tremendously excited about this, and I think, you know, we're all seeing so much opportunity, and there's a lot of, as we're finishing with the plan, you know, too, we're seeing so much work that can and needs to be done, and so it's great to have this news about the grants and start to imagine how things can start to take shape. Especially excited about the grant to do more ongoing and developing relationships with the Latinx community. I read through the excerpts from the applications that were included in our packet, and I know there was some notes about how, you know, in the Town Center Plan, that there was, you know, specific efforts to engage all areas of our community in the Town Center Plan, that we're really hoping to see relationships that are ongoing and lasting, and can be fostered for not just a singular plan, but for the many, many different areas and projects and work that the city is doing. So I'm especially excited about that, and would like to be part of it as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Leah.
It's hard for me sometimes to hear the speaker when they're in masks. But so did I hear something about, in the last piece on housing-related grants, regarding mobile homes or manufactured homes, or was that something different?
Middle housing.
Middle housing, so...
Just middle house, okay.
Middle house, yeah.
Okay. Well, I would just say, you know, this is something we need to keep an eye on. We have lost three mobile home parks that I can remember, and one of them was an enormous blow to the city, and we still have two. So, and I don't know what their status is, or how we are, you know, that's another very vulnerable population. I don't know what their status is in terms of changing into something else at some point in time, but we have to keep them in our mind in terms of our housing inventory, and what happens there as well. Anyway, just a side note.
I remember that debate, and the sad and difficult thing was that discussions about whether there might be possibilities to convert mobile home facilities into a co-op or a occupier-owned sort of a structure never seems to come up until you're in an emergency situation when something's got to happen quick. And that's not the way to try to make something like that happen. If we were to choose to try to pursue those options earlier on, it might be more effective. It's the kind of thing that when there's no crisis, it's hard to devote all the energy and attention to it, you know, because there's other things coming along. But I think those are very worthwhile comments to keep in mind. Anybody else? Can't see Counsel West again, so don't know if he would like to talk. The...
I have nothing. I can hear, but I have nothing to add.
Thank you, sir. There was a presentation by people from DLCD at Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting today. They were outlining the necessary housing issues regarding House Bill 2001 and 2003, a little bit kind of refreshed my memory. They're saying that the DLCD rulemaking is expected to be completed by October-ish this year, and that the cities will have benefit of that guidance by late fall. So I guess we need to keep that in mind. And then we have to decide whether we are going to develop our own model, our own code, whether we're going to adopt the model code that DLCD is preparing, or whether we want to formulate our own code that meets our own needs. And I think there's some significant arguments that that would be the best outcome for us, but it's certainly going to take staff work to make that happen. So there's a lot of threads to where we're going with not only doing our planning, but doing our codes and our protocols to set up to meet these new legislative rules in an ongoing basis. Do you want to comment on what our thinking is, Mr. Polly?
Certainly, the grant we submitted and requested was based on the idea that we will prepare our own code that's specific to Wilsonville's situation, and the rules we have now, and the extent that we comply now, and really tailor it to the areas that need most attention, and also allow work on making sure all these different types of housing best work together in a neighborhood. So that is the plan.
All right, very good. Anything else? Not seeing anybody wanting to comment further. Thank you, Mr. Polly. Thank you, Mr. Polly.
Thank you.
That is all of our scheduled work session, I think, Mr. Cosgrove, and we're getting really close to seven. Anything else from you?
No, we'll need a few minutes to transition.
All right. Do we stay on the call?
Yes.
All right. So stay hooked up, and how much time you need?
Five, six, somewhere in there, six, seven minutes, something like that.
Let's take ten.
All right. So if we come back about five after seven or so?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do that. Thank you all. We'll see you in a few minutes.